You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 20th, 2022 special meeting of the Michigan City Housing Authority. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www accesseslaporte county.org.
Okay, it is 12:11. I'm gonna call this meeting to order, special meeting. Start off with the pledge, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all. Ms. Hutton on the roll call.
Rodney McCormick.
Present.
Michael Vincent.
Present.
Stacy Bennie.
Present.
Brian Thomas. And Talani Rayner.
Present.
We have a quorum?
Yes.
The purpose of this meeting is to have an election, and at this time I will entertain any motion for interim president.
I'd like to make a motion to have Mr. Vincent as president.
To move to the point, we need to have, I believe we have to have interim president.
Interim president.
We do, we're without right now, so we do.
I'm good.
So, there you go.
On the roll call.
Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Stacy Bennie.
Aye.
Talani Rayner.
Aye.
Mr. Vincent, take your seat. And we need to get through this, make this official.
So this is for interim?
This is for interim.
Excuse me, sir. Okay, do we have minutes from any of the previous meetings?
No, not at this time.
Okay, so no minutes to approve, any communications?
No.
No communications?
Oh, wait a minute, yes I do. On, okay, Mr. Mary gave his resignation by email. That was the last communications we had.
Any other resignations or emails?
No, he was started.
I also received a copy of that. I'd recommend including that in the minutes for this meeting.
Okay.
Attaching it.
Right, any reports? No reports, moving on to new business. New business, election of officers. Looking for nominations for president.
I nominate Mr. Vincent as the full term resident.
I second. Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Stacy Bennie.
Aye.
And Talani Rayner.
Aye.
For.
Any other nominations for president? Hearing none. Uh, nominating committee?
Forgive me, Mr.?
Sure.
I, I guess we need to try to fulfill most of the seats as we can right now.
Vote.
And at this point, I would like to also nominate as vice chair, Ms. Stacy Bennie.
Just second. Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Stacy Bennie.
Aye.
And Talani Rayner.
Aye.
Please come take your seat.
Question posed to council, nominating committee, is that a committee that we need at this time?
It is.
For nominating of what?
It is additional members of the board. Pursuant to the bylaws, that's how you fill out the membership of this board, the composition of the board, is through the nominating commission. So if there's any people that, additional members, which you'll want Ms. Rayner to be a full-fledged member of the board, obviously she's here for formal purposes, but you don't want any final membership to be resolved through a recommendation from the nominating committee to this overall board for a final vote and approval.
So.
You won't be able to take that next step if you don't have a nominating commission.
Okay, because there are people that we discussed, that we have an interest in being on this board.
Okay, and the bylaws speak to some of the information that needs to be provided to the nominating commission, that once we get to the regular board meeting, you'll need to review before you make your final vote. So, and you'll see that in the bylaws, it's not important for right now, I just wanted you to know that there is a process for that.
And for the record, that will be on page 10 of our bylaws, section B, nominating committee.
Three members of the board.
If I may, Mr. President, I would like to set on that nominating committee if possible.
So it's an election or a choice?
So that is something that you would be able to select right now, actually I think it should be the three of you on the nominating committee, just based upon the current composition of the board and who's present today.
Okay.
So moved, it's Rodney McCormick.
I move, I move that Commissioner Bennie, Mr. Vincent, and myself be head up in nominating committees.
I second. Okay. Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Stacy Bennie.
Aye.
And Talani Rayner.
Aye.
Just for the record, nominating committee brings recommendations to the board, the board votes on filling the open positions.
Correct.
How many open positions do we have right now? Just.
Three. Well, he said we gotta make Talani.
Right, she's gonna take a permanent spot.
So it's, it's three.
At this point.
Are you checking?
At this point, I'd like to, for interim position for the board, I'd like to nominate Ms. Rayner to our board. Cause I believe this is only temporary until we go find other members.
I think that's right, yeah, we gotta follow that process, so yes, it would be.
I'd like to make it official and put her in.
Second.
Okay. Rodney McCormick.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Stacy Bennie.
Aye.
Talani Rayner.
Aye.
That makes four on the board now. We had one member that forgot about the meeting today, is he still on?
He didn't say that he wasn't gonna be on.
Okay, so that's.
It'll be the, one of the duties of the nominating committee to assess every other current member, their interest. You know, as we said at the beginning of the meeting, we've had one person resign already, right? So we need to poll each other member to see if they want to continue to serve or not. Uh, and then you also want to consider, even if they do want to continue to serve, what did their prior service look like? Uh, cause there are some requirements in the bylaws that, that relate to attendance, and whether or not.
Correct.
Right, whether or not they complied with that or not, if they didn't, then the nominating commission or committee needs to consider whether or not their continued service is appropriate. So that's just part of the work of the nominating committee, yeah.
If I may make a recommendation, Mr. President?
Sure.
I recommend that our secretary, with your approval, send an inquiry out to Mr. Thomas or anyone else that did serve on this board, to see if they still want to serve, and we move forward from there.
It would definitely make the job easier if they tell you know, then you know you don't need to do any further inquiries there, so I agree.
Okay. Anything else, any other questions on nominating committee or nomination of further officers? I, I do have a question. Secretary Treasurer comes out of the one of the seven?
Yeah, it does, I'd recommend waiting on that until we work on the bylaws a little bit. I think we wanted to at least get our basic composition going so you can get started. The nominating committee is an important piece so that you have a full board. You want to see who's in place before you, you know, have any other officers that are, that are set for the board. But I don't know if I'm on the agenda to give a report, but there's some other things I want to add to the.
Yes.
I'll wait for my part.
I will, I would like to add something to this conversation. This board had a possibility in the last three years to meet at a, at a minimum of 12 meetings, they only met twice. Both of those meetings was, did not comply with open door law. I think it's very crucial for us to take guidance from our attorney right now, so we can move forward. And because of, I believe systematic failure of this board, the leadership of the board at the time, the present, I mean, the past, I would like to move now that we put ourselves at zero threshold. And I'm asking that any expenditures out of this fund, out of this fund that we spend, anything has to come before us. It's obvious we are in trouble, and we need to make sure that we, we rein it in, and, and we have to move appropriately. I just think that it's moving forward, just nearly willing letting stuff go in, out the door without us knowing about it at this time, it's, it's unconscious.
Mr. Harris, what does that do for us as a board?
So from what I'm hearing, it sounds like you'd like to have some oversight over the expenditures, at least for a period of time until you get a better handle on what the finances are, right? So I think that's what, that's what's meant by the zero threshold, to me it just means, you know, total oversight. Now again, this isn't the Public Housing Authority, it doesn't have all the same requirements that HUD has. You know, the conversation about getting too involved in the day-to-day that you need to be concerned about with the Public Housing Authority is not necessarily the same with the not-for-profit entity, and because you're, you would have a concern as a board that you want to maintain the not-for-profit status of the entity, there are some financial concerns that you always have to have as a board, whether you suspect impropriety or not, or whatever the case may be, it's something you want to clearly understand. So I, I understand the concern, I would recommend that you do implement that requirement, I think that's more of a, you can take a vote on it, but I think it's important that we talk about what it looks like. I think what it really means is you want to have more reporting versus less reporting, and if there's any expenditure that is going to be made, and I don't know how frequently expenditures are made, so this may not be something that's burdensome, but I think we should have that conversation before you take the final vote, and I think Ms. Hutton can chime in on that, she's.
Okay, um, for, um, this board, the previous president would come and sign off on the expenditures for the month, each month.
Is it a two-person sign, yourself?
And you were, you're the new president, so you would sign.
And are you in position as treasurer?
No, I'm in position.
We have to.
But somebody is currently treasurer?
No.
No. No, there's no treasurer.
Who was, who was writing the checks?
We were writing the checks.
Yeah, who was?
Because we were.
Who was keeping the checkbook?
The checkbook is done by our finance, MCH.
So Michigan City Housing Authority employee was the treasurer?
Was, that baby.
Not officially as an officer treasurer, but served that function, served the finance function, and that's common, that's normal with housing authorities staff dealing with the finances of its affiliate or its remitality, the not-for-profit, right? So that setup is normal, she's signing off as the director. Oftentimes the director, the housing authority is also the director or manager or whatever title is given of the not-for-profit. And then there's a counter signature by someone else, typically the president.
That's normal.
And I think that's what she's saying, that going forward, then that would be you. So I guess the question for, for this discussion is whether that two-signature process is sufficient to keep track of all of the finances, you know, keep an eye on that, or if you'd like to have a monthly meeting where not only do you sign off on that, but it's somewhat, it's presented to the board, and at the conclusion of that meeting, that's when you would sign off on the check for attendance.
Well, one of the things, Mr. Vincent, that I read in this management agreement that, that was never signed by anyone, they spoke of, of putting the, putting a limit of $750 expenditures, but then in parentheses, they go.
$2,000, yeah.
Our history is not good, we are moving forward, right, but we still know where we were at, and where we, the people that we've been dealing with. At this point, I just, I just cannot move forward with, I have zero confidence in where we're at right now with our finance.
Well, it, it sounds like we're on, on a track forward, right? If we, if we keep looking back, we can't see where we're going, right?
So, and I'm glad you mentioned that this agreement, it appears as though this agreement is in place, we have, we don't have a fully executed copy of it yet, so I haven't mentioned anything to the board about it until we do see that. Obviously, that's an example of an area where it needs to be cleaned up, but the general idea of having that relationship between the housing authority and the not-for-profit does make sense, that's typical, right? That's why you create an entity like this, this, is so that they can work together in some way, whether it's for development purposes, whether it's maintenance and management, there's a variety of reasons you could use it, so I get why there, an agreement like this would be in place, there's just some issues with the agreement, and we want to make sure we're dealing with the correct version of it, because we haven't yet seen a signed version of it yet. So, we don't want to go editing the wrong version, we don't want to, we don't have to deal with the correct one, right?
And live you time.
Well, and if for some reason we don't find that, we'll revoke any prior versions of the agreement and just adopt the new one. But I'm just giving, I'm just having an opportunity to find the executed version, so we've been talking about that.
Okay, before we move forward, I just, I just want to make sure the motion or.
Well, I think it's a question.
I have a motion on the floor, if Mr. Harris' recommendation, what, Mr. President, whatever you're comfortable with, on the, setting the expenditure amount with, I'm going to agree.
Well, no, what I was doing is actually combining both, I, I am including your recommendation in what I'm saying, and that you're saying it should be a zero threshold, there's nothing approved without the board's approval. I'm recommending that we implement, we continue with the process that Ms. Hutton is describing, where there's two signatures that he signs off.
Oh, yes.
It's just he would do it at the conclusion of a monthly meeting that you have for this entity, until you get a handle on, okay, we get how it all works, no problem, Mr. Vincent can handle it from here going forward, so you may do this for two, three months, since I, I get it, I'm fine with it, it may go on longer, so I guess the motion would be that you agree that you're gonna conduct monthly meetings primarily for the purpose of reviewing the monthly claims, and at the conclusion that the president would have to.
But this one is.
So what, we do.
But this one is quarterly.
I was just saying. So do we, do we motionally do that, or do we have, you would amend the bylaws from off quarterly to monthly?
The, the bylaws don't prevent you from having a meeting on a more frequent basis, what's included in the bylaws is you shall meet at least that.
Minimumly.
Correct, yeah, at least quarterly, so what you're doing now is just to get a handle on, okay, what is it you're a part of, what, what's going on, and you're saying, I'm gonna do this monthly until we feel more comfortable and we revert back to the minimum requirement, which is quarterly.
I think that'd make us all happy.
Yes.
I'm motioning, I'm, I'm motioning that we, we meet monthly until we get a handle of this, I don't want to put a time on it, but I move that we, we go from, from quarterly to monthly meetings.
I second it, okay. Rodney McCormick. Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Stacy Bennie.
Aye.
Talani Rayner.
So, and this, I, I think the only thing that would be different for you is you would create or have created a claims list for that meeting, and the board, you would review with the board what that claims was this, and at the end of the meeting, you both sign off on all the expenses of data bills like you normally do.
Okay, since we do.
Cause you were already doing it monthly, right?
Yeah, once a month a check, then it would come in.
So this has changed that part of your, like the timing of your process, it just involves the board so they can hear what's going on before they set up.
Because we do have some checks that need to be paid.
Then we'll have to get together as a special meeting, correct?
That's what you just approved, yes.
We'll have to call a special meeting for us to get together, and you present the, the claims and the funds, and we'll approve those and then sign off upon approval.
Again, I, I hate to use the term from HUD, but I believe that we are in trouble status with this board. Cause they haven't met in three years, 20 over 20 months, so again, I'm going to go ahead and keep my motion on the floor, I move that we, any expenditure over $1 must come before the board as a safeguard, we are here for safeguard purposes anyway, any expenditure must come before the board.
In effect, that was the last motion that was just approved.
I don't think it included that caveat, it just, I think the last motion was just to hold monthly meetings. And I think now I'm saying, in addition to that, he's saying that all expenditures over $1 need to come before the board.
And that includes anything to do with maintenance, until you get a handle of this and we figure out what's going on, sir, I have a motion.
I'll, I'll second it, because it seems like it kind of piggybacks, piggyback off of the fact that we're gonna be meeting and, and going over the expenditures together.
It just cleans up the conversation.
This is only temporary, until we get out of this, out of, till we get everything situated. That's what I'm at with.
Okay, Mrs. Hutton on the roll?
Okay. Mr. McCormick.
Aye.
Michael Vincent.
Aye.
Stacy Bennie.
Aye.
Talani Rayner.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to attorney report.
So, so far, I have been working with Mr. McCormick on looking at the bylaws to determine what we want to do with it. Um, and I think today we took the first step on cleaning up at least the leadership of the board, and now we need to deal with the composition of the board, uh, so now we have a nominating committee, we'll get some information based upon what Ms. Hutton is doing, the poll, all those other members who aren't participating in today's meeting, so that we know if they're gonna remain on, or, or what the recommendation that nominating committee is gonna be. We have an entire board, we'll fill out the rest of the leadership of the board, uh, and then look at a new draft of the bylaws. There's some things here that are outdated, there's some things here that, you know, if you're not gonna do, let's just take it out so that you, you're not failing to comply with your own bylaws, right? The bylaws are pretty significant, you know, you've got 20-plus pages of, 21 pages of bylaws that you might not need quite as much, you know, that makes it difficult to know what the rules are when you have 21 pages you have to deal with. So I would recommend streamlining a little bit just to make this a little simpler, your not-for-profit shouldn't be more complicated to operate than your public housing authority, right? And that, and I think in, in some ways that could scare people away from serving on the board like this, because they just, they just don't get it, or they think there's too much going on, so we'll try to simplify things to make it easier for everyone. I guess the other thing would be, I'm not sure what type of financial reporting was required before Ms. Hutton, or if there was any request of.
He, the previous person had us give the monthly bank statements.
Okay, okay, the bank statement's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is, yeah, yeah, so there's some requirements that the treasurer would have to, you know, adhere to, that once we fill that, we're gonna have to make sure of it. I think what our goal should be is to have an annual budget, um, so that that's something that you're working from going forward, it does not have to be overly complicated. I just don't know whether or not the board knows what is, what are the ongoing operations of the not-for-profit, and what are the sources of revenue, and what are the regular expenditures going forward, and if they're, they have a budget and they're able to look at that as they meet monthly, looking at your expenditures, they can tie the two together and know, oh, you're on track, I get, I get what's happening with this whole operation. And without those documents, I think they'll attend the meetings, kind of be in the dark, you won't really know how the pieces fit together. I know, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't know, and I wouldn't really have any good advice, cause I don't, I don't know how the pieces fit together.
So the treasurer will be a non-voting member, correct?
Right.
And I think it's important that we make sure whoever our treasurer is, is bonded. I don't think we should go in blind with, to somebody that might have tried to add numbers before, I think that, whatever we do, cause this person's important right now, if we, if, it is a possibility that we can dissolve this board as well. If, when I've been reading in this, cause it seem like it's the same duties, almost as public housing, but then we, we have a problem with the not-for-profit funds and co-mingling funds, but we'll deal with that with the attorney, but would be, is, am I correct about being bonded?
Yes. And I think it's important that anybody that has, the way the bylaws, for me, this person has control over the finances. Now, a lot of times you still will use the same finance people you're using in the office now, but they're gonna review what they do and sign their name off to, it's saying, okay, it's, it's accurate. And that's why, you know, you want them to be bonded, because otherwise they'd be personally responsible if there's an error.
And for the record, I just asked to say this, Mr. Harris, you did receive an email requesting for you to do a title search on our, de-search on our properties, correct?
I did, so I, I think this is on another topic, and that's all the properties that are owned by the not-for-profit. What I've been asked to do is to kind of confirm what the current real estate inventory is. Now, this was an issue that should be addressed on the public housing authority side too, but in, in all, and this is an issue that faces all housing authorities, when property is acquired, it's not always consistent on how that property is deeded. Sometimes it's the Michigan City House Authority, uh, the city of Michigan City, but it's really ours, or in a variety of ways, that happens a lot with all, a lot of the different communities that have housing authorities. Well, the same is true with the not-for-profit, sometimes that name is not quite right, or it doesn't end up getting deeded in the proper name. Even South Bend, which is a housing authority now that is under really solid leadership, they're uncovering that on a regular basis that, and we never got the deed reported on this property. You know, and we've got someone that's got a voucher there with the properties in someone else's name, that can lead to some serious problems. So, so I've been asked to just do a, a search on that, and I just need the current inventory list of what are all the properties of the not-for-profit. We can reconcile that, okay, good.
And I did provide you with a list that was provided to me.
Yes.
Now, my problem, my concern is, I believe that some of those properties are not, I believe they are public housing, they are not HDI properties. And if that's the case, then we have a very disturbing issue that we need to take care of. I just don't believe that those properties belong to us, uh, far, far as HDI, Mr. Vincent.
And that's always, the big question is, once, whatever transaction occurred, after it happened, someone reported the deeds, and if it wasn't a formal closing, like you would have here to buy your own home, you're gonna close that at a, you know, title company, and you know everything's gonna happen, but sometimes it doesn't happen that way, and it's a more of a handshake deal between sister entities, and then nobody records a deed, you know, the deed's sent to the file somewhere. And that's what we need to find out that, that could have happened.
Yeah, I just have, I, I just believe wholeheartedly that the property that was reported to me was done purposely to mislead, to mislead us, and I'm, I'm, if I'm wrong, I will apologize, but I just, it doesn't sit well with me, I know better than this, and I just think that is appropriate for us to do that. And I'm, I'm just not, I'm not comfortable with that, so I did forward that information to our attorney. So I hope I have God's blessing to have the attorney look into that.
And that's it for me?
Okay, how long does it take to do the title search and deeds?
So it's, it's actually not a full title search, it's really, I'm searching with the recorder's office, so I'm gonna confirm everything that's on the list that's already been prepared to make sure that it is deeded in the entity's name, and then I'm gonna do a search on, in just the entity's name to see if any other properties pop up that aren't on the list. So it's more of a reconciliation than it is a title search.
Okay.
If there's a question about one that comes up, then we can do a title search, but there's money involved, there's a fee to do a title search, there's no fees for what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, it's something you have the recorder's office, and it's free, it's a free search.
And this is a report you can have back to us possibly by the next meeting?
Yeah, next meeting I'll have it.
All right.
Do we want to put a time limit on how soon we, the nominating committee will meet and start putting people, finding people to bring to the next board meeting to?
You can schedule a committee meeting, I mean, that may be a way of.
Out of quorum?
Yeah, you don't need a quorum for that, it would just be the three of you scheduling a meeting, whatever's convenient, I'll do, and it's a committee meeting.
I, I just hope that we'll release one or two, I'm forgiving this area, so I hope that we stay able, at least be able to get one member by, by our next meeting, whatever did you, you said. I have nothing.
Yeah, we'll be in contact after, off of meeting.
Okay.
Good. Another question I have about Secretary Treasurer, is it, is it also common that some housing authorities will reach out to a private entity?
Yes.
So that's a possibility for us, but we just have to pay that, and do we pay, do we pay our share to the current housing authority?
That's the agreement, right?
Oh, that's the agreement, I don't know what the, I don't know if.
Oh, we may or may not, we're not sure.
We may not, I'm not sure about it.
Okay, right, all right.
And if I just may add, by reading some of the bylaws, it's clear that we can hire our own, uh, public housing, uh, housing manager or executive director, whatever type you want to give that person, that's my understanding.
And we count, with the bylaws, I mean, we, we've talked about the agreement and the bylaws kind of being iffy up in the air, not well-written and all that, I just want to understand what is, what is done at other housing authorities, what's a good idea, what's a not-good idea, so.
Yeah, that was good.
Okay. All right. Anything else on there?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to the executive director's report.
At this time, um, I'll make sure that everybody got a listing of all the properties and bylaws for the new members. bylaws for the new members, but other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Okay. Any questions to the executive director?
I just hope on the report, our, our agenda that we, we list the item, line item where it says expenditures.
Okay.
So we can address that as well, I would like to know.
For the next meeting, right?
Yes, and I like, I, I hope that you bring our, our president and this board up to speed on how are we taking care of these properties, I don't want to get into the, the plan of where we have a, a not-on-deal going on, and we don't even know who's, who's getting paid, how much that person's getting paid, right now, it seems like we've been using, I don't, I don't know who we've been using, but maintenance has been an issue on the other board, and that, and it's, it's an issue here as well, and we need to get to the bottom of this, and we shouldn't hold this up, we need to have, we need to have a maintenance plan, we need to know what's going on.
And the, what's the current maintenance plan, are we all rolled into housing authority and?
It really depends on what needs to be done at that unit, under this, if it's something major, we contract it out.
Major as in a dollar amount or ability to do the job?
Well.
Okay, all right, what about, what about normal preventative maintenance, I know we discussed fire, smoke detectors and CO2 carbon, is that part of the plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so they're, they're all taken care of?
I gotta check with them, I know we've done Boulevard, we did Carway, I have the tickets and work with us for that, and they were working on the scattered site, I don't know if they did MCHDI, I have to check.
Have all citizens, have all the tenants sign off on the checking of the smoke detectors and monoxide?
Some residents signed off, if they were not at home, they didn't sign off, but we have their signatures on the work orders.
Well, we need to make sure that they sign off, because we want, we want the tenants to, we want the tenants to know that we're doing our part here, and, and there's no reason for all tenants not to sign off.
Well, some tenants worked and they were not at home, so that was the reason.
But we record that we, we've done.
Yes, yes.
Do we leave, do we leave a note on?
I don't know if we have to knock it.
Do we leave a note any other time we go in?
Yeah.
So we've left a note on these?
Like I said, I don't know, I will check and see.
Okay.
And briefly, on page two of the, of this, this proposed agreement that, that we, maintenance agreement that we're supposed to have, it says attached to, attached here to is exhibit A, this is supposed to be the maintenance plan for the, for the housing developer, do we have, do you have a copy of that maintenance plan?
No, actually, I didn't have a copy of that agreement, I have myself and myself looking through boxes, trying to find, because this was done in 2014, so we're trying to find the information.
I, I think it's very crucial that Mr. Harris receive a copy of this, so as you're looking for the signed copies, if, if you can come across exhibit A, Mr. Vincent, if you can come across exhibit A, that shows the maintenance plan, we would like to see it.
Keep seeing that.
Mr. Harris needs that, in order for us to function as a board, we need this information, I have nothing further.
See, next on the agenda is violation of bylaws, and I think we, we've talked about already how the bylaws need some work, right? So the new business of violation of bylaws.
I move to, it's been taken care of, sir, it was a violation, not meeting, not meeting quarterly, missing more than four consecutive meetings in the calendar year, not even meeting in the calendar year at all, so it has been addressed, and we're moving forward.
Okay, very good. Any other unfinished business? Public comment? No public comment?
I move to adjournment.
Second.
May against adjourn.
Thank you.